City of Lawrence Common Council's special meeting is now called to order. It is July 29, 2019. We have a quorum. And we're here for the rezoning hearing. Okay, so all who intend to testify or believe that they may testify should stand and be sworn in by the clerk. Thank you for raising your right hand.
Raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Be seated.
Okay, next we have the petitioner who has 15 minutes to present their case.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the councilor. Thank you for being here tonight. We appreciate it for this special meeting. My name is Andy Baroker. With me is Mark Leach. We're with Fagri Baker Daniels with offices at 600 East 96th Street, Suite 600, Indianapolis. We also have our client as the developer, Mike Albeher and Colby Sandlin, who are the purchasers and developers of the project, who will be available to address you after me, as well as answer any of your questions. So please share those with us, with them. They're here to address those. We've provided you a revised site plan, some elevations at your seats, along with a booklet, which will match the PowerPoint presentation that I'm going to go through, so you can turn pages with me if you want. If you ask where we are or need to know, just raise your hand, I'll make sure we're on the same page. So we are, as Madam Chavis said, this is 2019-0N-067 is the petition. 6025 Sunnyside Road is the address. It's 5.8 acres on Sunnyside Road and approximately 59th Street. It's in District 4, Councilor Williams' district. We are requesting tonight to rezone this property, which has been C4 for some time, regional commercial zoning to I-1, low intensity or low-use industrial property. Here's our submittal letter from our client and the owner requesting this, the rezoning. Here's an approximation of the map of the location. I'm sure all of you are quite familiar with it, being at a fairly central Lawrence, for sure. It's been undeveloped for many, many years, of course, as you all know. The box in red is the proposed part that we are proposing to purchase. Now, the whole site that is zoned C4, as you see where that C4 zoning is, it goes all the way well below Pendleton Pike. Our client is in contract to purchase the northern 5.4 acres, 5.8 acres, excuse me, of that parcel. The remainder of the tract will remain C4, regional commercial. As you get down to Pendleton Pike, that's certainly an appropriate use. More traffic, more retail types of uses would logically go into that area. Our client proposes to build 450 self-storage units at the site. The interesting, if you are familiar with this area, the interesting parts are it's unusual that it's zoned C4 for the things that are, exist around the property. And we've got some pictures in here for you to show it. But if you look to the north, you've got an IPS, IPL substation, pretty sizable one, right before the railroad tracks. The northwest is a church, sort of a special use. Incredoplex is to the west, across Sunnyside, which is zoned I-2. The plastics manufacturing to the southwest is zoned I-3. You have a telephone utility building, which is another SU use, special use, SU-18, I believe, just immediately south of the overall tract that's zoned in blue. And the remainder of the track south of our red box that we're purchasing will remain C4. What's not shown on here as clearly as it could be is that there are two cell towers, one just south of the telephone utility building, one on the west side of Sunnyside. There's also, as you know, a large billboard sort of out at the drive entrance of Incredoplex between the plastics manufacturing site. So it's a relatively, I wouldn't say gritty, but it's an industrial kind of use area now, not highly populated, one of the few areas where there aren't homes really close or adjacent to this type of use. Self-storage, as our client will address to you shortly, has a very low traffic count, right? So we didn't do a traffic study because this kind of a use generates very, very light traffic, for sure. So that just gives you a flavor for around the area as you come north of Pendleton Pike, sort of how that area is unusual or different than many spurs off of Pendleton Pike, which are heavily retail-oriented now. Here are some of the pictures that I should have put up, as I was explaining, the Incredoplex, plastics manufacturing, the heavy industrial kind of look and feel and uses of the properties really around and immediately adjacent to this site currently, right? The church's picture is there, the telephone utility building, very nondescript because it's secure, no windows. You wouldn't know that's what it is, and it's not exactly attractive, but that's not what it's meant to be there for, to attract people. It's sort of the opposite. You see the substation, the high-intensity power lines, which go to the east of our property, along our property. And then again, the railroad track is north, just north of this site, just north of the Here's the site plan, and we've given you a slightly revised site plan. On the left-hand side of this, you see a red line that is, has, is sort of over the paved driveway, which is internal, inside the property, inside the fence. We've worked with staff, Larry Callaway is here from DMD, and worked with them about not having this setback, not having improvements or driveway built under or in the right-of-way. That red line setback from the road would be considered right-of-way. Ordinance requires you or does not permit you to have improvements or buildings in that area. So we've moved that back slightly by modifying the pond, and we've shared that with Mr. Callaway, and I think he'll address that with you. But this is slightly off from what you have in front of you, which is through efforts with staff to sort of address that issue with him, and you can ask him questions as to that. Here's proposed renderings or architectural exhibits of what the used store, self-storage facility will look like coming off on the east side of Sunnyside. It's lit, it's secured, it's got a good drive entrance off of Sunnyside, got a sign there. It's again, set well back from Sunnyside, as well as has landscaping before you get to or see the black wrought iron fence in the front. And then on the sides is chain link fence, but it, our client has done developments of this type, has over 17 of them around the central Indiana area, is a proud developer of a very, very good product that looks good, is known for security, has good clients, and maintains a safe and secure facility. So they're experienced at doing this, they're not new at doing this, and this is an opportunity at this location, in your community, in your district, to have this type of facility here on a project now that has not had any virtually nil property taxes for many, many years. And so our client with purchasing and building will invest approximately $3.3 million in this project, which will obviously generate property tax revenue above of what it is doing now and what it's been not paying for many years. Here are some other examples of other facilities that our client has built and constructed. They typically have a resident manager on site in an apartment of some kind. This will be addressed via the variance process. If we can obtain your approval for rezoning this evening, we'll have a couple of variances on some doors facing Sunnyside, as well as this type of limited use for an apartment for a manager on site living there, to make sure all the time that it's secure and safe. They do that at all their other facilities, and it's provided, it's been very beneficial for the security, safety, upkeep, and maintenance of their self-storage units. Some other pictures. And I'll leave those up as I introduce Mike Albeher with our client to address kind of the market study of the need for this project here in Lawrence.
Good evening. My name is Mike Albeher, and I've been assisting Sandlin Investments in their real estate acquisitions since the mid-'80s. And basically, I'll tell you a little about Sandlin. Andy talked about, there's actually 17 greater Indianapolis locations, and then we're Kokomo, Fort Wayne, Anderson, and then we have facilities in Dayton and Columbus. This is a family-held business that started the self-storage business in Kansas City in 1977. They have, in many states around the country, about 90 self-storage facilities. So when we go and look at Indianapolis in general, we selected this specific site, and we've been trying to buy this site for over a year. It was repossessed by a bank, and we were successful in making under contract the entire 22 acres. So Andy may have confused you a little, the 5.6 acres on the north end, we're just asking to rezone, but we will end up owning the balance of that property, and we will be developing the balance of that property at some point. When I look for self-storage locations, because we have 17 of them in the greater Indianapolis area, we do extensive market research in terms of where our pin maps are, and a pin map for us shows where our customers are actually coming to our existing locations. So there is a void in the Lawrence area, and again, we've been trying to acquire this site for some time. Of the 17 facilities, our occupancy rate is 98% or more. In the 90 locations around the country, we have never closed one location. We build these, as this slide is aptly referencing, for long-term investment. That's why they're built with stick and brick, asphalt shingled roofs. You can go and look at a variety of the facilities, even the first ones built in Indianapolis in 1984. And while we've upgraded technology, we now have cameras around the site, we have a board inside the office that shows all those cameras. Each unit is individually alarmed. You go in through a gate, so you deactivate your alarm, and when you leave, you have to punch in your code, and it activates it. So our traffic counts for a typical facility, as we're leasing it up, average around two to three cars an hour. Once we get to the point of 90% or more, that traffic count is actually a little less because most people that store with us don't really come back. And we've had, you know, we've had tenants in some of our facilities have been in there 15, 16 years. So if you're a pack, right, like most of us are, these are perfect vehicles to store your stuff. As far as infrastructure, the apartment is a, it's a two-bedroom, one bath. So while we generate a great amount of tax base, and our tax base in Indianapolis can be anywhere from $35,000 to $80,000, we're not a burden on the infrastructure, whether it's roads, whether it's school systems, utilities, and the like. So I think that, was there anything else you wanted me to address? I hope I didn't ramble.
No, you're fine.
And I'm happy to answer any questions at the appropriate time.
Thank you.
And I'll finish up briefly. We'll respond to questions after Larry presents, but there are commitments to this, two of them. The first that are in your packet are in the staff report, and Larry will probably address those. They had requested that the drive up by the church be aligned with our entrance drive, which is not sort of how the property lays out. So the commitment is, if the use is something other than self-storage, we will, the drives will align across Sunnyside from each other. The current site plan does not require that because the traffic is so light for this type of a use. And so if it's not, if it's used for something other than self-storage, they'll require that alignment, but it's not required as part of this use and this rezoning, but that's a commitment. The second is to dedicate half right-of-way of 52 feet. It's currently, what is it, Mark, 40?
Currently, it's 25.
25 now. So again, the other commitment is to dedicate right-of-way along Sunnyside. If the requirement or desire is ever there to widen or improve Sunnyside, we've made that commitment, and that land will be dedicated or used for widening Sunnyside, which is infrastructure. So I just wanted to bring your attention to those commitments, and we're available for questions, and appreciate your attention tonight and request that you approve this rezoning from C4 to I-1. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. The remonstrator now has 15 minutes to present their opposition or objections. If you could please state your name, please. Did you sign in the back? I believe he got...
I was in here earlier.
Okay.
I did not sign up back there.
Okay.
I need your name and address for the record.
But you did get sworn in?
Yes, I did.
Okay, great. So just state your name and address for the record.
Charles Irish, 8620 Key Harbor Drive, Indianapolis, Indiana.
Thank you, sir. And you can proceed.
Okay. So I just learned about this request, that this hearing was going to happen this evening, and I've never been involved with one of these. I own the store, all self-storage, it's on Pendleton Pike, right across from Walmart. I was reading the brochure with the, it's approximately 70,000 square feet of storage that they're trying to add on that location. I know that there was a Storage USA that was just built down the street, down on Pendleton Pike, and I'm not certain that the area, I'm getting ready to expand and add 40,000 to 45,000 more feet on my property that's already zoned for that, and I'm not certain that the area, immediate area, will support 150,000 or 60,000 square feet of self-storage. It's a great site for something, and I understand what they're trying to do, the impact to me, and the impact to the areas, will they all fill up? When I build mine and this gets approved, I don't know, I can't predict that. I've only got one storage, one facility. I built it in 1999. It was a side business, and it's kind of become, going to be my only business. So having just heard that, I've had an hour to get here, so I didn't have any time to prepare or do any, any studies or anything on whether, you know, on details. But knowing what it is and the impact, and knowing that there was just a new facility built further west on Pendleton Pike, I'm not certain that this, I don't know. So I'm here to argue against it for that reason.
Okay, sir.
So.
Thank you.
Can I actually ask a question?
Not at this time, but we'll have an opportunity for that. Thank you. Any other remonstrators? Okay, seen none. Next, we have staff comments on behalf of the Department of Metropolitan Development.
Thank you. Larry Callaway from the Department of Metropolitan Development, City of Indianapolis. We are recommending approval of the rezoning petition, which would provide for the I-1 district, which is a restricted industrial district, the most or the least intense industrial district there is. The specific proposal is forced self-storage, which is permitted in I-1, I-2, I-3, I-4, as well as a C-7 district. They chose to go to the I-1 district, which is a district which would have the less sort of impact on the surrounding area. The plan for the area doesn't recommend industrial. However, when you look at the surrounding sites, you do have a, although not used industrially, you have an I-2 zoned site to the west, just rezoned the site to the southwest with a new company that's just built their building, that's zoned I-3, which is a medium industrial district, and there's other industrial further west on 59th. And of course, there's the substation and the high-power tension lines to the north and northeast. And so considering all that, we thought this request was a reasonable request to support. With respect to the commitments, we have three in the staff report. With the new site plan that they've revised, they've accommodated staff's concerns about providing an appropriate setback along the front of the property and getting the access drives out of that setback and providing for a landscaped yard. So we're withdrawing our request for commitment number three in the staff report, and has, as was mentioned, the Department of Public Works for the City of Indianapolis asked for 52-foot half-right-of-way along Sunnyside Road, but would be willing to accept a lesser amount, but not less than 40-foot half-right-of-way, if the engineering plans can show that the, all the improvements and access drives can be provided within that narrow right-of-way without impacting maximum pavement slopes, drainage, and general safety standards of Department of Public Works. And then the second commitment was, and also in discussing, in their discussions with the Department of Public Works of City of Indianapolis, they wanted to keep the drive where it was, and based on the low-traffic volumes of the self-storage, Department of Public Works was willing to support that. However, our staff felt that if it was not developed for self-storage, then they should provide for a driveway that was aligned with the site to the west, to provide for efficient traffic flow. And so they have agreed to that commitment. And so we are recommending approval, subject to the first two commitments in our staff report, and I'd be happy to answer your questions you might have.
Madam President?
Yes, Councilor Wells?
Under the site plan, under staff reports, and I'm sorry, I didn't quite hear you well, but in the very beginning, it says indicates a 45-foot wide north and south drive. That has been to your satisfaction, that has been, that concern has been addressed?
Right. They've modified their site plan, they've narrowed those two drives, one to the west and then one to the east, from 45 feet to 40 feet, providing for an extra 10 feet. Then they've also done some modifications to the buildings and other things to ensure that the, that drive is outside of the required setback. A 30-foot setback is required in the I-1 district, and so with that 40-foot half-right-of-way, they're 70 feet from the center line, which is where they should be. And so we're satisfied with the new site plan.
One other thing, if I may. I spoke this morning with our DPW director, and she indicated that if this is approved, that they would still require a variance. Is that right?
They've applied, well, excuse me. They've applied for two variances with the Board of Zoning Appeals. One is for the apartment, which is not permitted in the I-1 district for the manager. And the other is for a variance, there's a standard that says the doors can't face Sunnyside Road. So on the ends of their units, they have some doors that face Sunnyside, so they need a variance approval for that from the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Okay, and that's the only two things?
Yes.
Okay. Because she didn't get into detail what the variances was going to be about. Thank you.
So I have a question. Outside of cost, is there a reason why the driveways wouldn't be aligned initially?
That's probably a better question for them, the specifics of that. They discussed that with, like I said, the Indianapolis Department of Public Works, I really didn't get involved into that discussion, but, and the Department of Public Works didn't ask for this commitment. It was, it was a staff-generated commitment. In terms of that, they ought to align that if other development went in, if, for whatever reason, this self-storage facility didn't go in.
Okay. I'll ask the petitioner. Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Callaway?
I have a question. It was mentioned that the pond size was modified, so I'm just curious, was that made smaller than initially planned? And I'm asking because I actually had someone reach out to me yesterday about, because of the fact there'll be so much impervious surface with this structure, that they're worried about the sedimentation reaching the creek and ultimately reaching Indian Lake. And so was that pond size modified, smaller, bigger?
Yeah. On the plan, they've modified the area that the pond takes up. Now, I presume that in doing so, they also modified other dimensions of the pond in order to maintain the proper amount of drainage that they would need for the site. But again, that's a question they'd have to ask more. Obviously, I've not seen any engineering plans, but that was my presumption of what occurred.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, Councilor Hall?
Madam President, Mr. Callaway, I had a question on the right-of-way. I'm looking at the new, and I'm, I think this is the drawing we're going off of, newest, latest, and greatest?
I believe so, sure.
It says here, so I'm looking at the right-of-way. It says a 25-foot existing right-of-way, and then a 40-foot proposed right-of-way. I noticed that, so that 40-foot proposed right-of-way is to allow for the widening of Sunnyside in the future?
Right.
Okay. Is that sufficient for you? Do you have, do you see any other needs in the future to expand that right-of-way even more, or is...
Yeah. Well, like I said, the Indianapolis Department of Public, the petitioner met with Indianapolis Department of Public Works and discussed the 52-foot half-right-of-way required by the thoroughfare plan versus the 40-foot that they have shown on this plan. In the thoroughfare plan, the Department of Public Works also has the authority to require more right-of-way or less right-of-way if conditions warrant it. And so they were able in their discussions to convince them that if, that everything could be done within the 40-foot half-right-of-way, and again, assuming that all engineering standards are met within that, and the Department of Public Works was satisfied that that was
Okay. And I'm looking at the, and forgive me, I'm not an engineer. The electrical easement and the sidewalk, just worry, if we start widening Sunnyside, are we going to take into account pedestrian access along Sunnyside with the electrical easement? Is that going to be an issue in the future?
Well, again, with that, with that right-of-way, the sidewalks, that 40-foot half-right-of-way would have to be able to accommodate the sidewalks as well, as well as any road improvements and any, you know, sort of passing blisters, et cetera, et cetera, that would be required. So, like I said, it's up to them to prove that with their engineering plans, that everything is going to fit as, within that 40 feet, or they're going to have to provide additional right-of-way, and which then may require them to adjust their plans further down the road. So it's sort of at their risk, you know, that they still could be required to provide a 50-foot half-right-of-way if they can't show that a lesser amount can accommodate everything.
And again, please forgive my, so now we're talking about, we're just going to do the 40-foot right-of-way now, and if we need, if the city of Indianapolis or the city of Lawrence needs to come back and ask for that 52 feet, we can come back and ask for that 52 feet later?
Well, it would be at the time of them submitting for their, for their plans. If their plans can't demonstrate that they can accommodate everything within that 40 feet at that time, they'll say, you'll have to dedicate more than 40 feet, you have to dedicate 45, or 50, or 52, or whatever it may be.
Okay. And that's not what we're talking about?
Pardon me.
We're just talking about rezoning tonight.
Yeah. Well, the commitment addresses the fact that they can make that request at the time of permitting, that they can ask for anywhere between 40 and 52. Like I said, the petitioner is going to have to demonstrate in their final engineering plans that they submit, that they can meet all standards.
Thank you for the education.
Any other councilors have questions for Mr. Callaway? And then I'm going to ask the petitioner and the remonstrator to come back up for questions. Any more for Mr. Callaway? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
So I'm going to ask the petitioner to come back up, and if you could follow up maybe on a couple of those questions for some clarity, that'd be appreciated.
Yeah, and our client did meet with the director of DPW, and so I'll have them address those questions as to what they discussed and sort of address that question.
I'll speak to the right-of-way first. Mr. Callaway was correct. When we met with Larry Jones, we talked about the existing 20... When we met with Larry Jones, we talked about the existing 25-foot right-of-way, and then the thoroughfare plan calls for either a 40 or up to 52 feet of right-of-way that they may need. Mr. Jones said he always asks for 52 feet initially if he doesn't have enough information. And at the time that we met with Mr. Jones, we didn't have our topo survey completed, nor the, we still don't have our engineering. So, if in fact, we can't prove to DPW that the 40 feet is something that they can work with, and we would have to go to the 52 feet. So, I wanted to kind of clear that up.
We're saying, we're bound to do that by the commitment. The commitment says, if you can prove your case, and DPW says 40 feet is okay, then it's okay. If he says, you haven't proven your case, or we need more, or there's some extenuating circumstance, this commitment in the rezoning request would bind us to agree to, whether it's 45, or 52, or 40, we're bound to do what the Department of Public Works requires us or asks of us. So, I just want to make sure that's clear on the commitment.
So, and forgive me for?
No, that's okay. Go right ahead.
And I realize we're talking about 12 feet, right? It's not a huge amount. However, is there, is your plan okay? Is your, do you have that ability built into your plan to go to 52 now?
Yes.
Or do you need the 40?
Well, it would, it would change our site plan, it would change our engineering a little. If, if we think, because Mr. Jones didn't know the elevation change, that was the issue. Because in order to get their equipment in, if in fact, they do take this right-of-way, they want to be able to put that right-of-way in, sidewalk and all, and if it, whoops, if it drops off six feet or eight feet, they can't do it. And I think our topo, at least initially, shows they will have enough room, but it's our job to prove it to them. Obviously, we're trying to develop this as efficiently as we can. So, that's, and they were nice enough to meet with us and kind of go through this. But he did say that because he didn't have any other information, that he was holding to the 52 until we showed him proof otherwise. And then I think, I think somebody else had a question about why our entrance is where it's at? Who was that?
I didn't.
Was that, yeah, okay. If you look, the way we access our self-storage facility for security purposes, you go in, can you, can you make that? You come in, I'm sorry, you come in one way and out the other. Because the elevation does change as you go north, there's a little more slope up north, and because of where that drive would locate to the west side, it would actually come in almost to the middle of the apartment, which would mean that you would drive into the apartment, and you'd have to go two ways, where we can't go two ways, because then you have no way of securing who comes in and who comes out. So.
Madam President?
Yes, Counsel Shevlat?
Sir?
Oh, yes.
So, who currently owns the property?
It's owned by Fifth Third Bank.
Do they get that in a repossession, or?
I believe that they, they took the property back. It was, there's been several owners of it, but Fifth Third, from what I gleaned through the records, took it back in March of 17.
Well, you had mentioned, someone had mentioned that it was difficult to purchase. Why was it difficult to purchase? Because I've seen a sign up there for 15 years, retail lots available.
Well, the sign that you saw for 15 years was myriad of developers, and they were not able to secure tenants, and they're, they, they can't really develop it without a tenant. And when I say it was difficult, banks have very rigid rules, and the timelines are very difficult. They were not willing to parcel this off. So, for somebody to come in and try to buy this, they had to buy the whole thing, which is.
Which is why you bought the whole thing.
Yeah, which is why we did that.
Makes sense. You talk about the manager, I'm just curious, the managers live on-site 24/7, but at some point, there's got to be a rotation, so if they take off for vacation, I mean, what?
Yeah, we have, so even though they live on-site, the office is only open from 10 to 6.
Okay.
Because it's different in Ohio. And we do have managers that rotate in, we have a set of managers. With 17 facilities, we have what we call replacement managers.
Okay. And then, are you going to allow RV parking?
No.
Okay, and the last question, and maybe you did this homework, I don't know if you did or didn't, but you had mentioned, or I think this gentleman mentioned about the property tax. So, right now, this has been dormant with no, other than the 2%, which is not a developed. So, have you done any penciling out on what the developed property tax receipts will be on this at some point? I'm sure you have, because you'd have to do a financials and maybe go down the assessor's office and say, hey, we're 98% leased, adds value. Have you guys done any of that?
They're different in different areas of the city, and they, I think, I think I said they range from $35,000 up. It would depend on what the rates are. We pretty much know, our last facility, I think we're paying about $65,000 a year.
It's kind, that really doesn't, that's kind of an abstract number, because that doesn't tell me anything, what it means per acre, what it means. I'm just talking about, you've got five acres plus or minus that you're wanting to develop for storage. That is on a tax base, or tax rules right now, that's not in a, in this I-1. But if it gets developed and you put these storage units on, and it starts to create income, that therefore, there's a value to five acres. I'm just wondering, have you penciled out, saying, okay, we went down to the assessor's office, and here's what we think our property tax will be on this five-plus acres? That's really my question.
Yeah, I think from a property tax standpoint, they look at what the assessed value is. I don't think they look at income.
That's true.
Yeah.
That's on what, but I'm sure you've kind of penciled out, what do you think the assessed value would be, 2021, 2022?
We haven't gone.
You haven't? Okay.
No, we haven't done that. It's more based on the existing systems, we have an average, which we kind of calculate from there.
Okay, all right, thank you.
We didn't do it specifically, though, on this, on this one.
Madam President?
Yes, Counsel Jones?
I got a couple of questions, and I think you may have just answered the one. So, you've already purchased this, you're not, this isn't pending the zoning?
No, we have not purchased this.
So, it's pending the zoning decision tonight?
Correct.
Okay. And if I heard earlier from the attorney, did you say there's going to be over 400 units? Is that what I heard?
About 450 units. They range in size from 5-by-10s.
And then on the photo, I cannot tell. I saw the black wrought iron fence. How far is that?
It's an ornamental wrought iron.
I'm sorry?
Ornamental wrought iron, it's not the.
Okay.
True heavy steel wrought iron, which nobody does anymore.
Is that six or eight foot?
I think it's six foot, isn't it? What do you got?
I think it's, I think it's in at five, with brick columns.
Okay, and then, when I was looking at the photo, I couldn't tell where this is the regular fencing start. It's not the wrought iron or whatever you want to call it.
There's a brick here. You see that dotted line, the white dotted line?
Mm-hmm.
That's chain link. And then if you go to the north end.
So, all the way along Sunnyside, it'd be there, and then like a quarter on each side? Is it going down?
You can see the chain link on the north next to the subdivision.
Okay, I see it now, okay.
And then there'll be chain link across the back.
Okay.
For security purposes.
Okay. Any other questions for the petitioner? Counselor Giles, I think, was next, then Counselor Parker and Counselor Hall.
One question that I have is that, you've got five acres that are going to be developed now, but you bought 22. What is the largest facility you have here in the Midwest?
Self-storage facility?
Yeah.
How much is it? $93,000. They, they, when we first started building these, they were 45, and now they're over 70, but we just expanded Franklin. I didn't know how big it was.
So, that's 400 units, and you have a unit with 93,000 units in it?
No, no, I'm sorry, 93,000 square feet, not units.
Okay, okay, so how many square feet is this thing? What I'm trying to, what I'm trying to learn is this, you have 22,000, I mean, you have a.
450 units, yeah.
Right, but you got five acres developed, you'll have another 16, 17 acres to do something with. This land has been sitting for 15 years with no retail people. So, I would imagine, are you, you know, not to get too digging into your business plan, but I'm trying to get the thought of, is this all going to become eventually, is this phase one of a, of a storage deal? Do you plan to try to resell this, or this is going to be just green pasture for us?
When you say resell, you talking about the balance of the undeveloped ground?
Yes.
While we haven't focused on exactly what we're going to do with the balance of the ground, there's a lot of retail tenants in that general area, and we think there's, there's certain tenants that may be underrepresented here. We don't have a clear plan. I can't tell you we have a clear plan on the retail side of it, but this is what we're building, we're not building anymore, self-storage.
Okay.
So, what, what we're looking to do with the balance of the property, whether it be retail, whether it's a big box, whether it's retail office, something along, along those lines, we don't really know.
Are you, so are you comfortable hanging on to that land undeveloped?
Yes.
If, you know.
Well, I mean, obviously, the Sandlins want to develop it or sell it, you know, soon. And with, there's not a lot of C4 ground in this general area, and some of that ground on Pelton Pike is C3. So, we think that the flexibility that we have with this site, in that we can sell portions of it versus having to sell all of it, will open up, you know, avenues. And yes, those signs have been up there for many, many years.
Okay, thank you.
Whether it was Center Properties was up there for a long time.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
The question was about the retention.
Yeah. We haven't completely designed the engineering for this site yet, but in order for us to get a permit, that engineering has to be approved. So, it will be, it's even more detailed than we all care to discuss. So, even, when we did this conceptual plan, so you know, we kind of, you can make this deeper, you can make it dry, you can make it wet, and in order to get a permit, this water can't drain any faster than it's draining now off the property, whether it's impervious or otherwise.
Okay, that's good to know.
Counsel Hall? Sir, my question had to do with Mr. Irish's question as far as the density of storage units in Lawrence. I mean, what kind of research have you done to find that we will have tenants for you should you build this?
Well, as I said, the Sandlin family's been doing this for almost 50 years. What we do, in addition to the pin maps, we calculate what the, what the population is on two, three, four, and five-mile rings, and we do competition studies. We're fully confident, otherwise we wouldn't have gone forward with this, that there's no doubt that we'll be able to fill our systems. As I said, all our systems are 98% plus, and it's a function of picking the right site, it's a function of management, it's a function of the facility. And given what we do in terms of technology, we think this is a superior location. So, this isn't one of those things where they say, go find me another site, Mike, and I close my eyes and I throw a dart, and I hit Lawrence. We've been looking, we actually looked in McCordville also.
To, and to Counsel Giles' point of the rest of the ground, what, you said something about big box, retail, what is your background? Do you have a background in?
Yes. I, I started in 1980 and worked for Sandor Development Company for six years, Sydney Eskenazi, and built shopping centers in Cincinnati. I personally own real estate. The Sandlins have built shopping centers, office, they've, they've built warehouses. And I will tell you that Lawrence is a tough market for big box, as it is across the entire city. It is really hard. I mean, you can go and you can look at, we were just talking about Marsh supermarkets, they're hard to, they're hard to retrofit. There aren't a lot of big box users. So, if we look at this in stages of maybe different types of retail, maybe not a shopping center, because shopping centers are difficult to build, because right now, the cost of construction is extremely high, and in order to get the necessary returns, your rents are very high. Plus, you've got a lot of retail in that area. Because I remember when the Walmart was first built. So, I, I wish I could promise that I have a big box, but I don't. But I've been doing this for almost 40 years.
So, I think the city might enjoy discussions as to what the city could use in that, that ground in the future.
We would welcome that, believe me. And I can tell you that Center Properties worked diligently to do it, and for whatever reason, they were not able to. I know that they sold the Walgreens and, you know, to Steak 'n Shake, but we have, quite frankly, focused on the self-storage, because our, you know, our timeframes are pretty diligent. I mean, they're short, and we, we've, we've had some discussions about retail here, but I really haven't delved into it much.
And I know we just did another discussion about a bus lot, school bus lot here locally, and there was a lot of things that the contractor, the construction civil engineers did to alleviate some of the, I want to say ISO, but to kind of beautify the area with large trees and grass berms and some landscaping and things. I look forward to hopefully having that same sort of concept here.
We're very open to what the city would like to see here, and we've got enough brokers that we can find anybody if they want to be here. And it's, I, I was caught when they were paving Sunnyside, so that really looks nice now. So, big, big improvement.
Okay, we've got about one more minute left for the petitioner, and then we need to move on. Go ahead, Counsel.
Just have a really quick comment. So, it would be, you know, it would be great to find an owner for this property, because one of the things, and I think a lot of people know up here, that I've complained about for years, is the fact that it's been neglected, and that nobody's kept up on all of the litter. It's not really our responsibility, it's property that's been owned by somebody. So, if you were to end up buying this entire piece of property, would you take care of it, or would the owner take care of it?
Sure, yeah. You have to understand, the banks owned it for.
And, and I just found that out, so it kind of makes a little bit more sense.
They don't care.
But that's been a frustrating thing for, I think, a lot of us here, and so, it would be great to see someone that would really take care of that property, because I think it's hard to bring people in when it looks the way that it has for years.
I agree. I agree.
Madam President?
Yes, one more question, Counsel Wells?
You said that you did a studies, impact studies, and I'm sure that you probably were looking more as to what the study was going to provide for your revenue. Did your study happen to do anything with your competition and what it might possibly do to them? Because as a, you know, as a councilperson, I think we have a little bit of an obligation to, you know, the businesses that have been here for, you know, quite a number of years. And do you have any idea how many of these storage facilities are in Lawrence or in the township of Lawrence? Did your study come up with that?
We did do a, we did do a competition study. I don't have access to it tonight, but I'm happy to provide it to you.
Well, I count 11. I count 11 storage facilities, and actually, one of them has three, so, but I didn't know if they were actually within the township. I'd had, didn't have a chance to check the map, but if they are, then there was, that would make 14. Six of them is between Franklin Road and Sunnyside. So, it just looks to me that you've got a large competition, and I, my concern is, is what's, you know, this gentleman come, you know, he's just right down the street from you, and, you know, what's that going to do to him and his business, and what's it going to do to, you know, the, the businesses that have been? I know Lawrence has a lot of car lots, but it seems like we, you know, we're getting a lot of these storage facilities, too.
I can say that when we went and built a facility at 56 and 37, there were probably within, I'm not going to get these numbers right, it was some time ago, there might have been 17 or 20 systems within a three-mile radius, and we came in. have been 17 or 20 systems within a three-mile radius, and we came in, nobody's closed, and we're 99%. So, I can't speak to the competition, how it will affect them. I can tell you that when we come in and build a system, it will be successful, and history bears any resemblance to what we've done since 1984 will be 98%.
It's your only interest in this, what, 16-some acres?
22, it's 22 acres.
I'm sorry, yeah, 22 acres. You, you will not purchase this 22 acres if this storage thing does not-
Correct.
Okay. All right, well, thank you.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. I know we're out of time, so appreciate your consideration.
No problem.
Good questions, thank you very much.
We're, we're not on a specific time, I just want to make sure that the remonstrator has an opportunity to come back up for questions, and then we'll follow the rest of the, you can come back up, sir. I think a couple of council members might have had questions for you.
I do, Madam President.
Counselor Jones?
How many units do you have at your facility?
I've got 330.
Is that, are you maxing out 330, or do you have ability to have more?
I've got the ability to add another 40,000 to 45,000 square feet on the property that's already fenced and zoned.
How many more units would that be?
That would, I'm looking at four more buildings.
I mean, how many more units would that be?
It depends on the size, and we haven't, it's probably going to add 400 more units.
Okay, and what's your occupancy, are you?
We're 90-plus.
Okay.
With turnover of people moving in and moving out.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Madam President?
Yes, Counselor?
I think that was kind of my question, too. Mr. Wells talked about, we have added quite a few storage units in, in the city of Lawrence over the years. You said you've been there for quite some time, so have you, it sounds like you're doing pretty well, I mean, as far as occupancy rate?
We have been doing fine, and half the property is, that I'm going to move people out of, we've been doing site storage with vehicles, or trailers, or campers. That's, so we're going to, we're going to stop doing that and build buildings now.
That was my other question, because I'm very familiar with that site, and it seems like you have a lot of outdoor storage.
We do. Half the property, roughly half of it, is at site storage. And I've let the trees grow up around the fences, so that people didn't have to see a trailer or campers park there. We're going to clean the fence row up, and we move the people out later on this, this fall, move them out and build buildings, is the plan.
It's going to be completely, there'll be no more out, out?
No. And that, so part of that, my adding 40,000 or 45,000 feet is unknown to anybody, if they're looking at current facilities. And like I say, they're, that site is six blocks from where I'm at.
So, when are you going to start this development?
Probably this fall. And like I say, I'm already zoned for it, and the, the ground is there, we've just got to finalize the drawings and start. We're going to do it this spring, I was going to do it this spring, and I just need to get to it with some other obligations.
So, if this is approved, how does that affect your plan?
I'm probably still going to build it out.
Okay, all right. Any other councilors? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Petitioner has five minutes for rebuttal. A closing statement, please.
Well, again, we appreciate the, the questions and the dialogue. I wanted to, hopefully, Mr. Callaway and others have sort of indicated to you the amount of investment and effort that our client has put into this project. They've met with the DPW head director, they've been looking at this property for some time, they're buying a foreclosure property that has been neglected. You know, we're the ones that have to sort of do the heavy lifting and the hard work where we're at. We're not on Pendleton Pike, right? We're on 59, just shy of the railroad tracks, right? So, we, we've got to market and do our work, we're the ones that aren't going to have that kind of visibility. But again, I used to ride my bike all around that area, it, it's an area that needs some attention. Certainly, the city will realize significant increase in tax bills as to what the payments will be on that property from what it is now as undeveloped and in the condition it's in. We should have pulled the assessment on what that is and run those numbers, which is very easy to do. You can run those and see that, but it'll be significant. So, our client is, is invested, they're very, very experienced, deep reservoir of resources to be able to do this project, right? With, with facilities all around central Indiana, greater Indianapolis, with the management pool of folks to take care of them, you know, they're, they're a hands-on, experienced, deep developer that I think will make Lawrence proud as far as doing this project. And hopefully, something further south on the other C4-zoned property will come about, and they'll be able to find what that is, and meeting with the city and talking about what the desires are. You know, again, they're, they're retail brokers that, that talk to retailers all over the country, so they have capabilities of being able to get that done. So, we think this will be, is responsible zoning for putting this project here for the uses that are around it. Makes sense to modify the comp plan analysis because of the other I uses that are around C4. The area really calls for it, and so I would request your approval of our zoning request from C4 to I-1, and appreciate your attention tonight.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Our remonstrator, you have five minutes for rebuttal, or for a closing statement. Okay, sir, thank you. Okay, so if councilors could please take a look at the ballot that's on there, and make sure you sign it and date it.
I got one, Tom.
And then print your name if I can't, print your name if I can't read it.
Thank you, Kathy.
Eight votes were cast, seven to grant and one to deny, petition's granted.
Thank you for your time, we're adjourned.